I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes, questions, issues on the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, I get a motion by Dave Brusick, second by Kaye Wilcox to approve the agenda as presented. There's no other questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First thing on the agenda, I assume it's you, Kent?
Yep. Alright, so as the council will recall, you had approved conditionally the final plat approval of Pond Second Edition that was proposed by Mr. Mike Wynant at our last meeting. And following that, one of the conditions of the plat was that we needed to vacate certain range and utilities within the original Pond Edition plat, which highlighted kind of the boundaries of that triangular shape. A lot of overhead for everybody to review. So basically, when you plat a property that's already been platted or replat that property, it does not erase all the easements within that original plat. So in the case of this particular plat of replat of the Pond Edition original lot, it had drainage utility easements around the perimeter of that entire shape of the lot. So they are going to be putting new easements in place with the new plat. Therefore, the ones highlighted in yellow on the map that are on the perimeter of the original lot are not needed any longer. So what we're looking at for an action here tonight is in order to go through the process to eliminate those easements that are no longer needed, need to first of all call a public hearing to order, which we're suggesting happen at the Monday of November 19th council meeting. And then to go along with that, following the public hearing, and we'll introduce it here tonight, but you could take final action at that same meeting, is an ordinance that would approve vacating easements that are indicated around the perimeter of Pond Edition Lot 1 Block 1. And that's really the two agendas. So first action that we need is to call a public hearing for November 19th. That's resolution back set in the first page. And then the second item is the ordinance that would vacate the easements noted in yellow there. So looks like we get those listed as two separate action items on the agenda for tonight, so.
But we're not, I mean, the plat is still just one large lot.
Still a large lot, so I'll kind of highlight here. On the lot that was conditionally approved, we have easements around the perimeter of that along County Route 37 and around each side, and then the large easement that's around the wetland and the buffer area. So those are what will be in place, and these original easements are just no longer needed because they would overlap each other.
Now Kent, when he goes, if he goes ahead and plats another lot there, will we again go through another public hearing and another ordinance?
Uh, no, because all we would be doing at that point is just re-establishing new lot lines. We would only have easements on any new lot line that may be created at that time.
Okay.
Really, the only one that needed to be vacated in this particular case was this easement that was kind of coming through diagonally. These ones around their perimeter actually were being replaced exactly where they were initially. I talked to the surveyor and we were just going to only vacate this one through the middle, but for the sake of writing up a legal description, it was just easier to get rid of these easements completely and then the new ones put in place when that's recorded, so.
Kent, we should clarify that if only one house is to be built on this plat, that would not require him to come back before the city council.
Correct, yeah. Once the one lot is done and recorded, it could just have one house at a time. So that wouldn't need any further consultation.
What is, the area for plating is that long narrow strip through the bottom part of the plat. But I just wanted to clarify that.
We just have a general question. So do all new lots in town have a yellow line around them?
They all have easements around the perimeter, typically 10 foot along, any road right of way, and then five foot along interior lot lines, and another 10 foot along the rear. That's pretty typical throughout town. The only reason it would get wider is if we had a utility line that was on a lot line and we needed to make that wider.
But Kent, you're just showing these in yellow just to make it stand out.
I'm just highlighting this in yellow just to highlight the ones that we're vacating here tonight, yep.
Now, how about the other conditions? Has he met all those? I know I did see the email from Gary Pickle.
Yep, he's working on them, so he has a couple of brush piles he's got to clean up yet. And then he's got to finish the seeding, which should happen this week finally. It'll be finally drying out and it should warm up a little bit. So, yep, he's making progress.
Okay.
And he actually picked up and paid for the buffer signs that are required to be posted along the buffer edge of the wetland, and those will go up after he's seeded as well.
Okay.
And that was really, really the last few things he needed to do.
Okay.
How many houses can he put up there? I can't recall.
Just one at this point.
I mean, if he wanted, if he used the entire chunk of land.
Theoretically, you could get minimal lot sizes, and that could be four. But that would realistically, no, I don't believe that would really be the case, but just on a straight minimum lot size, technically could be four. But that doesn't account for the driveway and different things like that.
I see, so.
Not likely.
And I think his history is moving houses, unless his intent is to just sell the lot, but his history is to move in houses. And I think one thing maybe the council should be aware of is if you move in a house, it has to match the neighborhood.
Yeah, we require a condition use permit process to go through for any moved-in home in any residential neighborhood in New Prague. And Kaye is right, it has to match the neighborhood. Obviously, public hearing, the neighbors get to comment on that, but it has to fit in aesthetically with what the neighborhood that is there.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to call for the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. If there's no other comments or question on the public hearing motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0. Now Kent, this second, or I guess 5-0, excuse me, I can't even tell. This next, is this actually where it would be the first reading?
This would be a first reading and the introduction of this ordinance. We only do that so we can move quicker on the tail end for the adoption of the ordinance following the public hearing. There's really nothing to the ordinance other than it notes that you held the recorded public hearing. You took comment from anybody in the public that was willing to make that comment and move forward with the formal vacation by ordinance. So in this case, we don't believe there will be anything because the lot was never physically improved with any structure on it. And just going to look through city utility records, there should not be any utilities within any of the easements, so I believe we will not have comment, but we still have to go through the process. So that's where we're comfortable, and we typically do this when we know that there's not any utilities in there with introducing it when the public hearing is called for. And then that can help that process wrapped up immediately following the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance vacating certain easements on this plat.
First reading?
First reading.
Okay.
Second.
I got a second, I got a motion by Dave Brusick to approve the ordinance first reading, and a second by Maggie Bass. Any other comments, questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Mike, are you taking number two?
I am. Excuse me. Finance Director Solheim assisted in helping put this together. If you recall, earlier this year, the council had authorized the purchase of a fairway mower and a debris blower at the golf course. Those were purchased on May, those that were purchased on May 14th of this year are now being recommended for financing under a final loan ring with the general fund. We're doing this as an inter-fund loan just because it's not significant to go out and do any kind of bonding, but we can choose to do that later if we want to. But the intent right now is to do an internal inter-fund loan as we did last year with the purchase of the 2017 golf carts. So Patty put this together that in doing this is that there are no costs associated with bonding or private loans, and the interest rate is lower than the golf course is beneficial to the general fund. Patty's outlined most of the details of this in the attached resolution. The term of borrowing of the $56,250 is for repayment term of five years at an interest rate of 2.8% with payments to be made from the golf fund to the general fund as outlined in the attached amortization schedule that she put together. The back page, as it shows, the outstanding debt that the golf course has, where we're at here in 2018, and adding that into the schedule. You can see from the transfer from the general fund is that we have reached the point that we have maxed out that transfer contribution beginning in 2019, at least tentatively through 2023. So we'll have to be a little bit wary of what we're able to add on until we get some of this finally paid off, and you can see how the schedule drops off fairly quickly once we get that one. So we got, after this year, we've got three years left on the, the top one is the refinancing of what we did on the clubhouse remodeling that was done in 2006. We did the refinancing when I came in and have done most of the other financings since I've been here, so. Patty and I are recommending this to you that it's as neat and clean and as low cost as we can put it together for you.
Do we deduct this money from the transfers? Or do we do the transfer and then they actually do a check back, or how is that? Do you know exactly how that transaction's done?
Operating revenues minus expenditure.
No, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the actual, okay, so, you know, we had the loan. You know, I noticed, I noticed that she has payments twice a month, twice a year.
Yeah, that follows kind of the normal.
So when we do the transfer, do we deduct this, you know?
Yeah, it's a payment from the golf fund back to the general fund.
But they actually do a check, do you know, or is it just a reduction of the transfer?
I think it would be a paper transfer, but I don't think she'll write a check to do that.
Okay.
It'll be on the expense list in the golf budget, so you can see that. But I don't think it'll actually be a check that's issued between the two. It's just a paper transfer.
Right, okay. And is this one, if we approve this one and the other one, is the cart, are those the only two inter-fund loans that we have with the golf course?
Correct, and I may do something as we do this just to acknowledge that you can see basically the 2017, 2018 general fund loan is what these two are, so.
Oh, okay, I see, this one's already on the schedule.
Yeah, she put it into the schedule. She can see what that looked like with the dollar amounts behind it.
Okay.
We formalized that versus when I first arrived about 10 years ago, that the city was providing monies out of the general fund at the golf course, but there was no tracking of any of that, and no repayments or anything set up. And the council ultimately waived the repayment of all of those. But here, we formally have them on the schedule, and they're, they're as if we did it to the outside world.
Not a good idea. Any other questions? Okay. If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the inter-fund loan.
So move.
Second.
Who's second then? Okay, okay. I got a motion by Dave Brusick, second by Kaye Wilcox to approve the inter-fund loan to the golf course. Is there any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Mike, I assume you're going to take the next one?
I will, it's.
Did you, did you guys actually talk to them on the phone again?
Uh, we did, but most all of it was, was just simply sending them the caffers and their review, but with no, no half hour, 45 minute answering questions type session. That, excuse me, it's purely a review based on the caffers. And so it's just a part of their annual diligence. We haven't been able to sample with S&amp;P for a few years, but Moody's came in and reaffirmed our current AA3 bond rating after taking a look at such things as finances, the economy and tax base, debt and pensions, and management and governance. Excuse me, I'll take, correct that. With S&amp;P, we have a double A rating, which is one notch above the Moody's rating, which is why I tried to put the last sheet in your packet on this one to show you how the city has moved, where our bond ratings have gone in recent years, at least since 2000. So you can see, we've got both Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch, we're not rated by Fitch. So AA by S&amp;P, AA3 by Moody's. They did note in the materials that I called to your attention that the credit position for the city of New Prague is good. Its AA3 rating is level with the U.S. city's median of AA3. Notable credit factors include a very healthy financial position, a strong wealth and income profile, and modestly sized tax base, and it also reflects an affordable debt burden and a mid-range pension liability. So we talked to Terry Heaton as we reviewed with her. She believes it to be a good report card, not likely any major movement in the future that we know of. If you remember, we spent some cash back in 2017 for the pool project and the baseball stadium. And that's why you've noticed in there that they acknowledged from a credit trend that our net cash balance as a percent of operating revenues had weakened. Well, weakened was still way above what the normal U.S. median is, so we're in a good position there. We proved on a number of others, stable on others, so all in all, Terry felt it was a very good report.
Good.
So the intent is to just share, for you as an informational item, no action is needed on your part.
Good job. Okay, the next item on the agenda, Mike, I assume you're going to just kind of.
As well, that, yeah, that we decided to give the others a little bit of a night off that just happened to be the way that that fell. Just wanted to get an early selection by you or a reaffirmation. And we need to call for a special meeting to canvass the November 6 election results. And as you recall, we have to do that within 10 days of the election. So we wanted to get ahead so that we could see what your schedules look like and get that called in on the calendar. Typically, we have sufficient information, and in the past, the council has done it at different times. But many times, we've settled at about 7:30 a.m. on Friday following the elections, if that works in people's schedules. Depends on whether everybody's up or not out to work or anything of that nature. If we need to schedule it differently, we can certainly talk about it and do that. We're just required to do that within 10 days following the election. I also noted in there that as you take a look at that as a bit of a heads up that it wasn't until we were working here last week that we got to thinking as we were looking at submitting things that'll be coming through with Mindon over the next couple of months as we took a look at that and tried to schedule things in the council agenda and talked a little bit more about the election. It reminded us that Maggie's seat on the council was an appointment to fill the balance, or not the balance, but to serve the portion of the term vacated by Janet Tummo when she moved out of town until we got to a special election. Well, that special election is going to occur with a regular election on November 6th. Once that occurs, the individual that's elected, or is the selected elector, is eligible to then fill the balance of that vacancy, which would be the latter part of November, December, and then all of 2019 and 2020. So what that would mean is likely at the November 19th meeting is that we would be swearing in the winner of the special election. I think you all know, isn't, we only have one individual that has run for that special election, and that is Mr. Bruce Wolf. So assuming there are no write-in candidates that are able to outhole him, he would be the likely elected winner, and we would need to swear him in at the November 19th meeting. When we do that, Maggie's term in filling the special vacancy technically no longer exists.
So get your vacations in.
However, Maggie and Rick are the only two that have filed for the city council member seats along with Mayor, you as well, that all of you are running up unopposed. And assuming that all of you are able to withstand any challenges of write-in votes and you get re-elected, then you will all be sworn in to the new positions on the first Tuesday after the first Monday, which I believe is January 9th. I'm trying to remember from scratch today. Would be January 9th. So Maggie would come back on the council for a four-year term versus filling out the balance of the special term. So the mayor's would be two years, and Rick and Maggie's would be four years assuming that they withstand any election challenges. So I just, it just kind of came to bear, I did ask the city attorney whether the council had any discretion in essentially swearing in the winner of the special election in light of the question is, well, could that be deferred until January? The answer was no. That per the election, the public has spoken, and so once it's ratified that that individual is qualified to elect or to that special vacancy, then they're eligible to be sworn in, and no, we can't delay it until January. We have to do it at the most opportune time. And so when we get done doing this, the next regular meeting that we typically swear council members in would be November 19th. During this process then, Kaye, who is filling the balance of Amy Jurick's term, would also continue on through the end of the year up until we swear everybody in on January 9th.
Mike, on here, you have a special meeting at 7:30 p.m. I thought.
It's supposed to be AM.
Okay. Thought I heard you say AM, but in here it's.
We try to put small prints in there, and that should read AM if that is workable in your schedules.
I have a conflict that morning. Do I need to be there?
As long as we have a majority of the council there, that's all we need.
Okay, I'm fine with missing it. Who you guys are?
Yeah, I should be around.
Yep, I can attend.
Okay.
Alright, so that's okay to do at 7:30 a.m., and we should have the results. We typically wouldn't have the resolution and the election results. Likely, we would be bringing that to the meeting for your consideration, but it's something you can read through and prove before you have to take any action, so.
Kent?
I'd still like to get the materials, Mike.
We would.
Okay.
Good, okay, so that's set.
So if you'll take an answer to call for a special meeting.
Okay, I guess I'll make a motion to call for a special meeting on November 9th, 7:30 a.m. to canvass the election results.
Second.
I got a second by Maggie Bass. Any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Consent agenda. We're at the fun time already. Anyone have any questions, comments, or anything? Anything in the consent agenda? The only thing I had was, I was looking at the, what are the financials through September? And I asked Patty this, and she gave me the answer. The budget through 9/30/2018 on the revenues looked kind of weird. But she said all they really do is take the actual less the year-to-date budget type of thing. And so it made sense, but it just, it just looked weird to me, but that was.
Well, the whole reporting, we've tried to model this after others, and she tried to put it together, trying to take a look at the timing of the year and the timing of some of that. I still question whether, whether I like the format or whether it should be something different. The challenge is in a number of our revenue sources in the general fund, property tax two times a year, LGA two times a year. And those would be the two major ones in the general fund, is that it's really deceiving when the second half property taxes and the LGA doesn't come in till the latter part of December. You go almost nearly a whole entire year before you get to those final payments that drop into our account from the state and the county under taxes. We get a little bit in November, but the majority of the property taxes in December from the county. So it's very difficult to gauge how well you're necessarily doing in the general fund revenue-wise because those two items are time to wait.
Right. I don't know, I like this, but again, I'm going to call myself, but.
What was different from last year?
Oh, no, it hasn't changed from last year.
Oh, okay, I thought maybe you noticed something.
No, no, it just, the budget through 9/30, some of those numbers looked weird. She says, all we did is took the actual less of year-to-date budget, and that's, and I said, oh, well, that makes sense. It was just like a formula that she, I'm sure she loves to see my emails on Monday morning. Any other questions on any items in the consent agenda? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Kaye Wilcox, second by Maggie Bass to approve the consent agenda items. If there's no other questions or comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. We're already to the fun part, miscellaneous. Patrick, we're not going to answer the question.
The smell of heaven.
Alright. Do you have anything you want to say?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mitch?
Good.
You're good. Rick?
Good.
I just have a question for the council. In the next few months, I'll be looking at ordinances and addressing some issues or concerns with any ordinances that we have, one of which is the ATV snowmobile ordinance. I have to look at incorporating a utility vehicle in that. And I would just ask for any input from the council on where you're at with those utility-type vehicles and/or side-by-side other utility vehicles like that. I know several cities around us have written their ordinances. Jordan is one that is permitting them right now, just like we do our golf carts. They still can't drive on the highway, they can't drive on certain areas if you designate that they cannot. But they are only licensed by the DNR, which the DNR looks at them as recreational vehicles, not vehicles that necessarily need to be on the road. Many cities up north have it kind of wide open for them. They, they have trails in and around their community. Last weekend, we visited my daughter up in Moose Lake. We went to a couple of shops, and there were four or five of them driving down the road. So I just would want you to think about it a little bit and what your feelings would be on that to get some feedback before we actually address that ordinance. Like I said, right now, when we, when we see those types of vehicles out and about, we will talk to them. I did, right around 4 o'clock, I left City Hall here, and there was one just down on the corner here. I stopped and talked with them and just advised them. Right now, they are qualify as a, in our ordinance, as a ATV-type vehicle, and they're not allowed, except for a direct route out, to go and do recreational things. He was just, happened to be driving around his block to get to his backyard to load up some branches and stuff. And then he said, so I can't drive this out to dump my branches? And I said, no, you cannot, because that's called general use. You're not using it for rec.
Are most of these vehicles street-saved, so they have headlights, taillights?
Some are, some have them incorporated into them stock. Some of them that you buy, you can, you can add those items for $250 to $500 that they'll, they have an add-on kit that you can put on.
Okay, and then as far as the speed that they can go, I'm sure that they're faster than the golf cart, but would there be some sort of a concern that they wouldn't?
I think right now in our ordinance, we have 15 miles per hour, so that's what they're designated at. Now, if they're driving, if they were ever permitted. Now, if they're driving, if they were ever permitted here, our ordinance right now talks about them being to the right of the road, right side of the road, along the curb line. So like for a snowmobile, obviously, there has to be snow on the road for them to actually travel lawfully. A four-wheeler could be doing that right now, but their speeds are limited to 15. If we move to permitting them, the idea of that is you're permitting them on the roadway so that it wouldn't necessarily be on the right side, they might become part of traffic. So they would be in the roadway. But some cities do different things. You could limit their speed. Jordan has a minimum of 15 miles an hour to the posted speed limit, but they must remain under the posted speed limit, obviously.
Thank you.
Yep.
Would we require them also to have a snowmobile vehicle? As in like doing the golf carts?
You could, if you're gonna make them travel at 30 or less, which would be within the city, I mean, a couple of the highways have 35 miles an hour, 45 in some areas, but they can't travel on a state highway anyways, so.
They can cross a state highway or a county road?
Yeah.
Be basically the same?
Yeah, much the same as, I'll have to look at county road, 'cause I believe county road is part of the DNR statute that may allow the larger ones, the side-by-sides, to actually drive on a county road. 'Cause I know, Lee Sura County just wrote their ordinance here in the last year and a half or so, allowing those vehicles to drive on their county roads wherever cities have allowed or permit them to. And part of that was Waterville, Elysian, where there's lakes so that people can use them within their city then.
Is there any extra damage to the roads that you know? I mean, those tires are?
They're all rubber tires.
Even if they're big knobby, that doesn't chew up?
I don't think so. Be a question for Glenn, but no, I haven't seen any issues. They're not studded or anything.
Does Jordan have a permit?
They have a permit process that they go through, and I don't know what their fee is, but yeah, they actually issue a permit like we do for our golf carts, something to put on it. I did talk to Brett, the chief up there, about what they require for insurance, because, and I'll check with Chuck Toopie tomorrow, just regarding how you go about getting insurance, because if it's not intended as a road vehicle, are you actually putting the same requirements as you would have for a vehicle that you drive on the road? So if they can get, I believe they can get liability, like you can on most snowmobiles and things, but I don't know about the others, if you're able to get full collision and no fault and all of that. But I will look into that.
Okay.
So just, I'd like you guys to think about what direction you want us to go with that ordinance then, if you wanted to allow them or not allow them, or what you wanna do.
You have some other ordinances that?
Just curfew. Curfew, I wanna look at, a year and a half ago or so, the county attorney talked about trying to get all the curfew ordinances in the county kind of on the same page. And we have a couple of times that are off a little bit, but that'll be general, pretty easy to do.
Okay.
And then we did wanna look at, oh, what was the other one? Our liquor? Liquor, just to make that compliant with any changes in state statute now with breweries and things. Our ordinance may have incorporated the 348 statute at that time, but it would have been at the time that we approved the ordinance. So just speaking with our attorney, we probably wanna update that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Ken?
I do. In your packet, I'm gonna hand out another item related to a question some residents had, actually specifically the email from Jim Kaufman. We had a meeting last Thursday, Sean Ryan was there, representing some constituents as well, that live on Autumn Avenue in Eastland Development. And I'll just give a quick overview for everybody on that. The reason why I'm doing an overview is, during our meeting last Thursday with the residents, they initially wanted to come to the council meeting and present their issues that they had, wanted to share with the council and get input, but during a meeting, I think we realized it was more of a engineering, technical matter, but we still wanted, or they still requested to make the council aware and known of the discussions that we had. So, Eastland Development here, and I apologize if this is zoomed out much, but I wanted to show you some details on here. So directly south of Cobhorns and Little Duke's gas station, we have this development in Eastland that is building out, and will eventually, they're kinda working on the roundabout at Third Avenue, or Third Street and Alton Avenue here, and the completion of Third Street through there as well. So, back in June, some of the residents that live in these particular townhomes here that back up to this wetland complex that you can see here, and also adjacent to a man-made pond as part of this development. So they had come to me back in June, asking some questions about why the water level in the wetland was kind of, in their minds, approaching upon their backyards, and generally didn't seem to be subsiding at all from the spring. So I met with them a few times, I went and speak also, met with them on a couple vacations, and even City Engineer Chris Cabot. We met with them in City Hall, we met with them on site, we had walked the perimeter of the wetland and the pond, and even went so far as to have WIT construction verify inlet and outlet elevations to see that everything was built per the original construction documents. And Kay, you already remember this, so back in 2007, this was actually platted and then just sat there vacant for roughly nine years when they started getting back into the townhome development here. So plans were approved, you know, 11 years ago now. And anyway, so we verified that everything in the plan looked spot-on, basically, for what it should have been constructed to. But they still persisted in noting that there's water kinda closer to their townhomes. Related to that, if you wanna note, and we may just point to them and Sean jump in whenever you'd like to. We wanted to make sure there was no danger to any of the homes with any water coming near, low openings, you know, basements and things like that. And we documented to them that, you know, there are at least two and a half foot difference between where the water level would be at its highest point and where our emergency overflows. So no way is it danger of having homes and things flooded. But it wasn't until mid-last week, and we had been anticipating meeting with these residents again, and having City Engineer Cabot out again to look at it, that one of our construction observation inspectors from SEH, Mr. Gary Lawaghi, noted that one of the manholes in Third Street, kinda are highlighting here, I don't know if you can kinda see the structure right there, a stormwater manhole, is actually submerged and basically grimming to the top of water. And we had noticed that back in July, and it had been raining, and kinda put it off in the time, and we were out there with Mr. Jim Pint and Mr. Kaufman at that particular meeting, who had been concerned about the water levels in the pond, and said, ah, it's been raining, we'll take a look at it again, while the water's never gone down in that pipe. And two key numbers I wanna just point out to you, basically, so the water level of this wetland and the pond is at 1,017 feet today. And that's all due to an outlet, okay, so here I got my hand on it here, there's an outlet that basically, when the water in that wetland gets that high, that outlet's in the pipe and goes kinda to the northeast in the land over by the Ford dealership over there. So that's kinda a controlling structure, it's 1017 elevation. Well, this was explained to the residents last week, the construction plans, approved back in 07, have a design elevation for this pond, and the storm surer structure of being two foot lower than that. So that's basically why the pipe in the ground is completely frozen, so, or completely underground, so our concern is that if this were to remain that way, pure winter, the entire pipe could theoretically freeze solid, and there's no order for the water to go. Again, not to the point where any home is gonna be endangered, but there's clearly something wrong in the construction plans in Eastland Development, something that, for whatever reason, we had a different engineer back in 2007 that reviewed the original construction plans and had approved them. INS engineers was a design engineer for Kay Witt, and is still the design engineer for Kay Witt. So they were asked, and that was the second email I handed out, on Friday, they were told to immediately stop work so we could have them investigate why that pipe is completely filled with water, and determine if there's simply an air made on the outlet, being two foot too high, or if there's just another design flaw there. Obvious question is, why is this just getting caught in that? This kinda question we had with Mr. Cabot, and obviously he was not a review engineer at the time. But there's clearly something, it's not where, everything's backing up the water from 1017 elevation, everything this was designed here, so water isn't gonna go out when it's being held up down at the end of the line. So WIT has contacted their engineer, INS. We don't know what the outcome will be, but we did wanna pass on the concerns from the residents, that they had noted that, they're obviously right in the backyard of their homes there, the seat at water level had never receded, a little baffled about why that was happening, and we might have figured out what the issue is. So, we don't know what the fix is, we don't know if it is even an error, but we believe it probably is, and are looking at it. So no work is allowed to continue on the roundabout in Third Street until we get that answer from the engineer, INS engineers, from the developer, at Chris Cabot from SEH. On the city's behalf, we'll review that, figure out where we go from that point. So, again, we don't really have a final answer, but we wanted to make the residents' concerns known, Mr. Kaufman's email outlined it pretty well, I felt, in his email, that he had known, noted in here about that two-foot elevation difference, and we're gonna hopefully get it sorted out sooner than later. Ultimately, it might come down to, and we don't know, it's not just a matter of raising more wetland elevations at will, there's a process to do that. We don't know if the 1017 elevation was the correct historic elevation, or if it was just in here, but obviously downstream impacts. Mr. Tom Topka owns the land adjacent to the Ford dealership, we can't just let a bunch of water out there and hope that it works out past the rationale and reasoning behind it. So, again, don't have a final answer, we didn't wanna make you aware, no homes are in danger of flooding, but there's clearly something not correct in the design, so it's time to put the brakes on. WIT has been informed, they're obviously not real happy about that, but they have contacted their engineers, hopeful here within, you know, a day or two here, what might the outcome be to take care of the problem.
How do you determine if there was an error, or if someone?
Well, we're hopeful that INS, in their original design review, can shed some light on some historical designs that they're working on, to see if, hey, if it did change at some point inadvertently, or, you know, beyond that, we don't know. But clearly, water is being held up too high. You go out, fewer you go out there, you can see the water level is killing some trees along this back portion of the wetland that certainly probably wasn't let, especially if there's some ice up there that have happened during the summer. Okay, this is probably not right. And I personally saw, even in July, this manhole lifted the cover right off and there's water clear to the top. Well, it had just rained, but it's still like that, you know, months later here, so. We'll figure it out, we don't know if it'll be an easy fix, but ultimately, we have not accepted this development. The city improvement is responsibility to Kay Witt, to get that figured out. But as far as the 2007 plans and any of that outlet elevations and air or not, that's yet to be determined. We'll keep you in the loop on this, but Sean and I got contacted, I don't know how long ago, but by some of the residents out there, 'cause we were kinda spinning our wheels a little bit too, and trying to figure out what was going on. We were waiting for WIT to get some asphalt done throughout the course of the summer, they did finally do that. But, yeah, I was in the Tellar Construction Observation Engineers office, and said, yeah, something definitely is off here.
Yeah, just for the council's benefit, I had Mr. Pint and Mr. Kaufman reach out to me, because they were working with Ken, and like Ken said, he was waiting for some WIT to finish certain portions of the street and whatnot, to get aspilts and confirm the elevation. Their concern was, is that their basements are at 118 feet, the pond is at 117, and if we get any type of big rain, six inches, that's gonna fill up and go into their backyard. They had all stated that their underground sprinkler systems were flooded on the back part of their grass, they were always underwater, so they knew that the water was rising, but it wasn't, and it wasn't supposed to be there, as they obviously wouldn't have installed the sprinkler system. There was phone calls going back and forth amongst three or four different people. I just reached out to Ken and said, hey, can we all get out of, sit at a table? They asked if I would come with them, and I said, sure, so I just sat in on the meeting. A lot of this engineering was over my head, but they had historical pictures and everything else of what it was at, and they're just concerned that it was gonna, that it wasn't right, and indeed, it was not right. So there's an issue there. And so I just tried to help facilitate it, get everybody together. Chris was in town, so Ken put a meeting together, we all just sat down, they answered, it was probably about an hour, hour and a half.
Hour and a half, probably.
Answered, they had the maps out and everything else, and went over every little detail with them, and the residents went away feeling good. The work had stopped. What their concern was, is that this work was still going on while they were awaiting answers, and that it was gonna reach a certain point, that there's gonna be no recourse for them, because the road would be in them. And obviously, Chris saw that there was a problem, so.
It had, had Third and Alton Avenue of roundabout been completed, that would certainly made it more difficult to move pipe elevations that are in the ground, but not get covered up with any street surfacing, so. It was good, good timing, and I think, obviously, with the good weather, you know, we're probably hoping to get out there this week and work on that, but I can't speak for them, but I don't believe, they wouldn't wanna have long-term issues up there either to have to deal with, so.
Might be a silly question, but taking the manhole cover off, is there anything obstructing that pipe at the bottom that could?
No, we don't believe so, 'cause everything's holding even, and so the water level is at this 1015 elevation, the pond, or, excuse me, the 1017 elevation, this pond is held at the 1017 elevation, and ultimately, this entire wetland is at the 1017 elevation, which leads us to believe it's all being held up by the outlet, which is designed it.
Okay.
So obviously, again, it just backs up, so give you a little, how the water train works, I guess, so. This all at 1017, the water ultimately is coming from this control point here on this pond, which is being held at 1017, which then connects to this manhole and all the water from the street at 1017, so that's kinda, kinda the path of the water. So it's all backing up to that end point. So I don't know, if they can't dislure the structure, we don't know what the solution will be, to be honest with you, but.
Are they manufacturing it upstate, or are they still just doing elevation?
They're ready to put it all in place and get the street surface on. They would've been probably wrapping up curb and gutter and everything this week. So couldn't have waited any longer. So we'll keep you in the loop, just wanted to make you aware, again, to get calls from anybody else, but we had a good number of the residents that live in that association at the meeting, and like I said, I think they felt good about being heard. We obviously don't have final answers for them, but we do have a stop work order up there.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Mike? Mike?
Just to remind you that Wednesday night, we've got a lunch meeting at 5:30. I had hoped to have certain terms, but we tonight ran into a bit of a challenge with it, and so we should have a conference tomorrow. It isn't going to be anything significantly different than what you already have, but it'll be some slight updates along with some supporting documents from some of the departments so that we're ready to go at 5:30. If you recall, we agreed we'd provide dinner on Wednesday night. Does anybody have any preferences as to what you would like to have, or you just want us to roll the dice and hopefully we'll pick something right?
Surprises.
All right, I'll work with Barb and see what she can find.
Barb's going to cook, you said?
That's right.
Like, or except for a curry, don't?
Then I know it would be good. Otherwise, that's all I have, other than when you get done after the miss最后一个 is the authorization under number seven. When we get done with the miss最后一个.
Oh, okay. Okay, Barb, anything?
No.
Sean, no?
No.
Kay?
Pardon me?
I was going to say, did you want to provide the news on the passing?
Oh, I'd just like to inform the council that Ken Vetterton passed away this morning with a heart attack. He was found, but he had a wrench in the bottom of his house, heard a thump, and he went up, and EMS came out and tried CPR and it didn't work. I just had somebody ask about those little houses, you know, they were kind of comedic when they first went in, everybody kind of ridiculed them behind Ace, and now as the world wants smaller housing, they were just wondering if the city ever considered doing that. And I said, "Well, that would be developer-driven." So I called the developer that did the first one, and he's, he would like to do it the next, you know, do another one, and I think financing might be a problem for him. So I'm just hoping the city would be open to that, and I think he did a CIC, and would you have areas you could guide developers to where these things could fit?
Yeah, so Kay's referring to detached association homes on Lady Slipper Avenue, basically north of Ace Hardware there. I've been talking to Doug Pint, he was the original developer of that area, I think he called Matilda Estates at the time. So he has been looking for land to do similar units, but understanding they probably need to have a little bit different aesthetic look and to break up the monotony a little bit. If you drive down that street, they all generally look the same and generally have a very plain Jane kind of look. So he recognizes that, but he's looking for some land that might fit to do that, and they certainly would be a lower price point than, you know, would be considered a typical starter home, and New Prague today would just probably around $250,000. But yeah, I mean, well, we plan to work with Doug as we would with any other developer on land that's available throughout town, and as with any other single family, they simply need to, you know, find a...
So that would qualify as single family, so it doesn't have to be next to commercial, you know, high visiting medium?
No, because they're not, they're not attached as a townhome, they're a single-family home.
So that could go in any single-family zoning.
They could. Now, the question is, would he want to set it up as an association like those other ones? I don't know, and that's really a private choice to do that, but...
Does it have to...
I think, I personally think there's different net need. I mean, we have senior housing, one is alleged to be quite expensive, I don't know what it is, but we obviously have a lot of independent apartment-type buildings, but people that want to retain their own home and they can't afford the ones in Eastland, you know, it's just good for a city to have different options, I think.
So to Kay's point then, any available lot, it doesn't have to match aesthetically if you're in a neighborhood of 3,000 square foot homes, someone could come in and...
So now, subject to there may be covenants from a particular development that may prevent that.
Yeah, but we know that cities don't...
Cities do not enforce those.
Do not enforce covenants, that's developer.
Yep.
And in my old neighborhood, they weren't ever enforced at all after, once the lot slowed down. So you're telling me that somebody could come in and build a vacant lot, a house that might be half the size of the rest of the neighborhood?
You could, yes. We do not have a minimum lot size, or a minimum house footprint size. At this point, we have minimum dimensions, minimum dimensions are in our zoning ordinance, and I don't quote me on this exactly, I think it's something like 22 foot wide at its smallest dimension, and then, I don't know, I'll have to look back and get back to you on that, but that was basically to prevent things like mobile homes and things from proliferating into particular developments, which is illegal, by the way, but we do have some minimum standards. It's just not a square footage requirement that says, you know, we got to have 900 square foot per level or something like that.
No, but don't you think that if we were talking about the development earlier tonight and somebody moving houses in and it has to be aesthetically...
Yep.
Have some type of continuity?
There's a real difference there.
Well, there is, but who's to say that they're not going to move a house that was built from 2003 and that just might be a little outdated? I mean, we're not saying, I know what you're thinking, you're thinking a house from 1950 or something that's going to go into this neighborhood that was developed in 97, but that's not the case.
Well, that would be finding a zoning to deem whether it fit or not, but you're right, somebody can own a lot and put anything they want next to you.
And that's a concern for me, I think we should address that. I mean, if a neighborhood has a certain style, I'm sure the neighborhood or the residents around the neighborhood wouldn't want something that doesn't fit within and affect their property value.
Yep, understood.
So I'm all for, I'm all for Kay wanting to have, if a developer wants to purchase some land and create those style houses all together in a group, I'm all for it, but just because there's a vacant lot, which we know that there's several around houses that...
I think we're talking about not just filling in a vacant lot in the neighborhood, we're talking about a new area being annexed.
Right, and I get that, and I know that's what Kay was going for too, but the concern that came up was the fact that there are vacant lots in certain size homes and different aesthetic qualities that somebody, now you're saying that somebody can come in and build a house that's half the size or a third of the size or whatever it might be, which wouldn't match, you know? I mean, how can one side, we have it, we have to have it aesthetically match the neighborhood for somebody, a developer that's building tonight and not do it for the...
Some cities do have that requirement. City Jordan has some mild requirements related to that. It's just very difficult to administrate that and determine how far, varying from that is too far to be acceptable, certainly at a staff level, then you're just into, everything's got to go to council at that point. And then it's very, some would argue arbitrary on how you're basing that. I don't know how...
Well, there's a percentage that you could say, if the average median house is 2,000 square feet, that it has to be within 80% of that or something. You're not telling them they don't have, maybe they don't want to build that big of a house, but it has to still be within 80, or whatever the formula is that we come up with, I'm just spitballing, throwing out ideas, but...
Yeah, you can do anything. I'm just trying to think of a way that's not a total burden to have to monitor that, is where I'm going.
Right, and I understand, but you could understand where a neighborhood could be affected by a house that were...
Yep, and to go back to the covenant thing, that's where a lot of them aren't enforced because the neighborhoods don't want to take the time to enforce them, even though they're there. So I encourage neighbors, if they want to, still follow that, hey, enforce the covenants, that is a civil matter at that point.
Moving forward, we would require a developer that's going to have covenants or start out with covenants, follow them by ordinance. They can set the covenants, but we're not going to...
No, because it's nothing we can, we really can't enforce that, and then when there's more than 50 or 100% sole, it's no longer in the developer's hands, then that's just how they work.
But, you know, I think the other issue though is you're looking at one end, but what about the other end, if someone goes and buys a house in the older end of town or something, flattens it and puts this big monstrosity in it?
I agree.
Because that's happening in the cities all over.
It is, and it's a big issue in Edine and in Minneapolis itself. Yeah, so I, no, I agree, it's on both sides that we should be looking at.
You're looking at one area where it's maybe an open lot, but it can also happen in the other area where someone can go in there and say, you know, "I'm buying this house now," and put a $600,000 thing, and it still, they just build it up higher.
Right.
I don't believe we had any complaints when that cluster went in behind Ace, and there are some, you know, they're nice homes on Lady Slipper.
Oh, yeah, I know people that live in that. Yeah, I'm not saying that.
But they didn't complain at that time when it was in their neighborhood, so...
Yeah, and I'm not saying that, I'm just, and that's a little different because there's, what, 30, probably 30 units there of the same style house?
Yes, and I think that's what I'm talking about, some of the acreages in the Little Village.
Chuck was right, though, I was thinking of the house that was just a lot that sat vacant in our neighborhood for, since 2003 and was just built, and of course, it matches, it's a beautiful home, it matches aesthetically and whatever else, but I was unaware that somebody could have come in and built a tiny little house that wouldn't fit the rest of the neighborhood, and that would have been a concern.
No, I certainly can look into what some other cities do have. It's going to vary a lot. The only one I know of just in the immediate area that has that is City of Jordan, and it's a little bit, but yeah, I can definitely look into it.
Well, as you're talking to Doug and whoever else about, and if we're looking at doing this type of ordinance or looking at this type of style housing, we should include that on there, both from both sides, Chuck's side of the people.
Yeah, no, Chuck makes a good point, yeah, in Edine and Minneapolis where they take the one-level rammer and they want to build a three-story monstrosity, blocking light to the neighbors' homes and their view and all that. Yep, it goes both ways.
We used to have the Historical Society and the river, the beautification of the riverway would rule how high you could go like that, just to prevent that from happening.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, Kay?
I, no.
Maggie?
No.
I don't have anything, so Mike, do we need to adjourn this meeting and...
Well, you need, no, you don't adjourn this meeting is that there's simply a motion for a second to do what's listed under item number seven.
Okay, I guess I'll make a motion to go in to close the session.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone.